We'll go ahead and open up our meeting day for a work session. Um please silence and show off your cell phones and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Albertson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, um, uh, any additions or deletions?
No.
Good deal.
Were we gonna talk about? The? Organ stuff or not?
Uh, so, um, Jason came by to see me, uh, he's still working on stuff with the camping.
Okay.
Ordinance, uh, so it sounds like he's, just give him a little bit more time for the next meeting.
I just sent a email right for the meeting to that group.
Okay.
He's kind of saying that we wanna start making the changes to the ordinances that we need.
Right.
And any of the things that they see that we need, so.
Did you see the updated, uh, draft?
I think that he sent it, but I didn't read it.
Okay, so he's got the updated, um, his, his final draft, the camping ordinance, and then he's got his final draft of the, uh, um, the other, the other ordinance as well that he's provided. So he's kind of gone through, changed some language and everything. It sounded like he was still gonna reach out to people to do some more research, so I just figured just to let him have that. Sounds like he's been making really good progress. So. Uh, first item, the earliest though we could do anything is the first February meeting, right? We've made it six months for those particular ordinances. Oh, yeah.
The, I guess it'd be a six month change, or in six months.
Yeah, and I think the time would be the end of January, yeah.
We could discuss it.
It would mean, or it would miss our third, or third week of January meeting. So it'd have to be the first week of February, or the next week.
Take action.
Take action.
Copy that. Okay. Okay. Um, quarterly service pens. Uh, we have three votes for the service pens. We have, uh, Rachel Bonai and Kimberly Rock for a five year pen. Okay.
That's dope. Thank you.
No way, that's. Grabbing some technical issues with the owl first.
Let me have one for two here.
Yeah, Kevin asked me to put it in his box, they weren't able to attend, the sheriff is supposed to be here nine, however, I don't think he was.
Well, let's, let's hold off on this then.
Two of them are out of.
To make sure that he's actually gonna be here.
Well, three of them are out here as well.
Two of them are not currently actively working.
Right, but, um. There, the, the three of them are out of his office, so I'll, we'll just go ahead and wait for him. And then, uh, then if Kevin's already giving me direction to put that one, uh, Kobe in the box, that'll be fine. And Rick, Kobe, and of course, is at fifteen years, so. It's pretty awesome, I mean, Rick has been just absolutely tremendous out there, learned, working on machinery. I know he's been doing a lot of work on the, uh, Vanway inline crusher, um, been spending a lot of time there. He's just, uh, he's really killing it, so. Um, but I will go ahead and we'll hold off on that. We'll move down to the next item, appoint a chair or vice chair for the two thousand twenty-two, uh, year. So I've served the last year, um. I'm really, um, looking forward to not serving another year as chair. Uh, I've got a lot of things on my radar going ahead, so, um. Uh, however you guys, whatever you guys would like to do.
Very good job.
Yeah, good job. Thanks. It's not an easy task to be the chair, meet some of these conversations, but you've, uh, diffused a lot of, uh, conversations that could have been hostile and, and, uh, made it very corrupt. So I think there's a lot to be committed here.
Thank you.
But I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Commissioner Albertson as chair.
I'm not gonna second him.
You're not, okay, well, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to.
Wait, wait, you say your motion on the table? Um, as, currently as chair, uh, a motion's been made and seconded by myself to appoint Commissioner Mark Albertson as the new chair of Lake County Board of Commissioners. Um, is there any discussion or objection?
Just give it done.
Right. Sounds good, all right, with that, um. I'll take a vote, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Albertson, the meeting is yours.
I'll make a motion too. Oh, I can't. Do I hear any, well, since it's mine now. Do I any, hear any, uh, motions for vice chair?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to make, uh, Commissioner Schuhlenberger the new vice chair of the board commissioners.
Any discussion? There's been a motion on the table?
Uh, yeah, it, I suppose, if you can get a second out of him, or if you wanna second it.
Well, I'll second it.
No discussion from either.
All in favor of Commissioner Schuhlenberger taking the vice chair for the board commissioners, say aye.
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 Any ayes?
None.
So, Commissioner Schuhlenberger is now for vice chair. And thanks again, James, for doing what you did.
I appreciate it.
Especially taking the calls from the governor when we were going through the prison fiasco, so.
Yeah, that was, it came, it came with challenges, I think, I think you'll do fabulous, Mark. And, uh. The, uh, for me personally, I, you know, I, I would like to have a little bit more. I know this coming year is going to have a lot of challenges for me. Um, it's been public knowledge, of course, that my wife and I are expecting and we're going to be starting the band term. And, uh, I, out of the entire time I've served, I think I've missed one meeting. Um, out of the last three years, uh, this year maybe, I, I may be missing more, so, um, I just.
Well, you could always call in from home.
I know, but I may not be able to do that either, so depending on the circumstances. So I just, I appreciate you guys kind of taking that over. Both chair and vice chair, appreciate it.
All right, moving right along, let's talk about our liaison changes. Um, for pu- for public knowledge, we have a list of liaison duties as commissioners. These are the ones that are just wrote down, we got many other duties besides this, but. I know online, um, right up the top, I don't have the successor anymore, but Commissioner Albertson.
Oh, okay. Um, Chair, I would like to have the Lake County Fire Defense Board, uh, moved to position number one for, uh, Vice Chair Commissioner Schuhlenberger. As a liaison. We've kind of discussed it in the past, and so I think it'd be.
Okay.
Good for it to move in that direction.
Who's that?
Uh, it's under LC FDB. It's about halfway down.
Now, let's go into Commissioner Schuhlenberger.
Yeah.
Undermine, uh, Southern Oregon Clean Energy Alliance. I never did meet or know what that group was, so.
I did meet.
Like, it can be deleted.
Okay. Until, until they engage with this kind of thing.
The other one that, uh, probably needs to be added to my list is the Oregon Catalans Association with the, uh, endangered species. Cause I'm a chair for that committee. Who's he a?
Man, what about the prison advisory committee?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not that personally. Are you, Mark?
I'm the pack.
So move that to you. Yeah, but they haven't contacted me for a while. Sorry. What's going on out there?
We're, we're still meeting, we're meeting virtually, so we meet again this month, end of this month, we have a meeting, it's all virtual. I happen to be, um, uh, chair of the prison advisory council, so we have a meeting this month. We've been meeting for the last, I believe, my couple, two or three times, uh, virtually.
Yeah.
I'll get you that information, permission when it comes in.
Is that okay? Make sure I'm, yeah, can you take that? Then the other one that I have that I'm not sure that this is what I really do is the renewable energy task force.
Yeah, that's on the wayside.
Let's go on the wayside too, so that could be, I didn't know, Christian Williams, if you were kind of that person.
I mean, nothing, we don't have a task force, uh, I've been doing a lot of the groundwork on renewable energy topics because it's been so, it, it can be a very contentious, but a very important subject for us to be engaged in. And so I, I've been kind of the liaison with Korea. Um, that's not listed as a liaison, it's one of those things that, no, we don't really list, but, um, I've been going to the Korea meetings for three years now. And, um. Very informational, uh, very informative as to what's been kind of going on around the state, around land use. But again, it's not, it's not a task force, and, uh, they deal with more than just renewable energy. They deal with energy as a whole, working with utility companies, so to speak, you know, not just on solar or wind.
Would you want energy listed under you, or?
Just like a renewable energy.
Like a renewable energy, no task force, or?
Yeah, because there is no task force that I'm aware of, I've never even known of one during our time here.
Well, if you wanna do renewable energy like we do down here on the bottom, where all of us have that responsibility, you don't wanna live it up, because I know that we're matched out pretty much, so.
Um.
Or we could just leave it off.
Or just leave it off, yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty public knowledge that I attend the Korea meetings, preferably. Um, and, uh, I'm one of the few commissioners that really do around the state. But I don't know if it necessarily has to be on there as an official liaison.
Another one that, uh, probably need to bring up is broadband. So.
But that's under me, that I.
That's under you, okay.
I think telecommunications should probably go over to you, as you've been kind of heading up and spearpointing a lot of those projects. When I originally took this on, we were.
I didn't realize telecommunications was broken there, okay, good.
And this would have kind of fell under in the past. Um. When I first kind of came on, there was a, there was a number of grants that were still kind of being worked on. Hey, morning.
Good morning.
Um, but today, and I mentioned this in one of our previous meetings, the grants and the dollars available for broadband projects now, they are so much different than they were three years ago. So, um, there's a lot of opportunity there for, for additional work and projects.
So the National Schools and Counties Coalition down in the bottom, what is that?
I don't know.
We've I've never.
We haven't used that since I think, so it might be something.
Yeah, right. I think it should probably be taken off unless there's.
I don't hope every, I don't think it's answered here.
Because see, we can put things on too, like, you know, like the fire defense board was never on there in the past either, and. We can add things to liaisons later.
Yeah, we can take that one off, but, yeah.
What about the Sustainable Forest Action Coalition?
I think we'd probably replace that with this year, I see, or the climate self partnership.
That's what I think.
Yeah. Yeah, that might need to change.
Or we just rename it K L H F P. Also, uh. Commissioners that. Group you were on, Commissioner Albertson, with the Northern California, Southern Oregon.
Oh, yeah. Well, Orca?
Orca.
Or, Orca resigned with those guys, did he?
I, I told them in December that I no longer wanted to be part of that group, that I felt the climate forest self partnership was covering our needs. I committed them for the work they're doing, but I didn't see how any work was ever gonna happen in Oregon. And they recently sent us dues, and I would recommend that we not pay for this.
So do we have to have a motion on that, or can we just, since this is?
Yeah, I agree.
Good sense of it.
There's plenty to do.
They weren't very much, but they didn't move anything for us either, so.
And Chair, one of the things that I was kind of curious on was nuisance.
That's what I'm thinking, so.
Yeah.
You wanna change something?
Well, I just. I, I just think it's, it's, it's odd that it's there.
It should go along with the building and planning.
Right.
So we can just move it up.
Or maybe code enforcement, or something like that.
Yeah, but that's still under building and planning.
Correct. So I, I don't even, I just kind of wondered if maybe that should be taken off.
Or how about planning slash code enforcement?
Well, we don't have anything on planning, it's just building.
Well, I have planning.
Oh, you have planning.
It's a, I have planning, so technically.
So we should, what if we do building and planning, and then include nuisance in building?
But you have building.
Right.
And, and then I have planning, and so because those are two individual department heads, and we just kind of liaison.
I'll copy that.
Between those two, but I just don't know if nuisance needs to be there, because we don't have a nuisance department.
Correct.
It's, it's been.
Goodbye.
Consumed, if you will, by other departments.
So for clarification, you're putting code enforcement with planning, we're under Commissioner Albertson's?
Uh, maybe, they'll, they're making code enforcement work together.
Yeah, right, because code enforcement is underneath planning and building anyway, so I just wouldn't even put code enforcement necessarily on there. I would just leave the two actual department heads the way they are, just take nuisance off. Um, the only thing that I was kind of curious to maybe do some work on, we hadn't really had time to discuss this, was, uh, the rack. Um, I don't know if you've been, how, how things have been going with that, or?
So. I have Title III. Community Services Title III.
Yeah, you have Community Services.
I thought somebody else had the rack.
Uh, no, I think the rack's under you.
Oh, it is.
But, um, I was hoping to try and get that group revitalized and kind of get a.
Do you wanna move that over to you?
Yeah, that, it, it's at your discretion, it's not really a department head that I, we need to necessarily coordinate with. It would just be.
I believe that.
Okay. Cause I was going to try and sit down with Todd Forbes at some point and try and work on some of this stuff with the rack.
Um, while we're talking about OEM stuff and the whole, all of our changes. So I've spoken with the sheriff and Daniel, as you know, Daniel's office is over in the towns. City police, and I'd like to have OEM over here, so. Um, if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to move him into the Ginger's old office.
Build that county development office.
Cause he needs a lot of room, because he's got manual after manual, and, um. So if that's cool with you guys, to put him in there, so we can have Daniel here in the courthouse would be awesome.
The communication's been kind of lacking, so having him in this building might help make it improve things.
So I talked to him yesterday, and I said, I've talked to you guys today, if it's okay with you guys, I'll start that process to get him moved over here. I talked to Dave Berman already and that, so.
Good.
If this is early.
So, just for clarification, we're not going to move code enforcement into that office now? Cause that was our intent, like after he's trained.
Was that what was gonna go?
Mm-hmm.
I thought they were happy to be together at the same.
Well, I didn't know, I just hadn't followed it up since they wanted to do the training period and have him there. I think it's fine, in my mind, but I just.
That office is big enough to share, so I have no problem, if you want to move over there with Daniel, I have no problem. But, I mean, that office is big enough for two, if they need it, so.
Do we work with Dave Berman on that, or?
Yeah.
Have you talked to Dave about it?
Well, I talked to Dave about moving Daniel over there, and he was good, and so. I probably do these.
And you talked to Daniel and shared and everything?
Yeah.
Yes, Jay.
What's in this office right here?
Empty.
Available.
I'm sorry?
It's empty and available.
Oh.
Anyways, so, I, I just wanted to bring that up on a second, so, is there any more on, uh? Liaison?
I'll get this cleaned up for tomorrow.
All right. Meeting schedule? Thank you for swooping that up in quarters.
Um, Chair. Uh, one thing I'd like to point out, um, we have. It's at the discretion of this board to a certain extent, and I hate to be the one bringing it up, but, three times a year, we've been requested by folks in Lake County to have meetings on the greater state of Idaho. So that's on the fourth Wednesday of January, May, and September. So those are in addition to the meetings that we already have. But might be good, kind of have that on our radar for the calendar, just thought of that.
That's a good idea.
Because we kind of missed it a couple times last year, once because we didn't have a core on.
And it is a core order, so.
That'd be good, just add that to our meeting.
Just a special session.
Yeah, special session.
I've already put a notice in the paper.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing that, uh, we're kind of against is traveling, uh, in those weather, like tomorrow, we're going Christmas Valley. Um, I was wondering if we could move Christmas Valley to like November, February, or something like that. Sort of, I missed December and January, but it's just a thought.
I totally agree.
We're doing business everywhere, twelve months here, but. Go ahead.
So I was wondering if we kept like a pattern of, so this year we go already committed to the fifth, we see Christmas Valley, but if we try to go to Christmas Valley quarterly on the first, or regular session, and then that keeps us traveling in November and December to Christmas Valley on the roads, or have been so bad. And then maybe postpone in January, in twenty twenty-three, and maybe go in February twenty twenty-three, but.
The other thing is, we never did go to Paisley this last year.
Yeah, so what I brought up to Melanie earlier before the meeting was, since we're not getting, we're not hardly getting anybody showing up at Fort Rock. Uh, we moved the Fort Rock ones to Paisley. And spend half it twice in Paisley, and Fort Rock people can come to Christmas Valley, I mean, it's not that far, so.
We've probably had a maximum of two people at our Chris, at our Fort Rock meetings. And they were Christmas, and one of them was a Christmas Valley resident that came from Christmas Valley to attend the Fort Rock meetings.
So if you guys are cool with that, we'll eliminate Fort Rock and move it to Paisley, so we can do Paisley twice a year, and then. Over.
And then on Paisley, do you wanna go to Paisley in February or March?
I would say, well, we got Paisley, we always do my road advisory too, there.
That's usually in March.
So February?
Yeah. Hello.
Hey there.
Yeah, how are you?
Good.
Life's great.
Did we cover that now?
I feel good about this.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, guys.
Good.
I think we're hitting on our time item, you wanna go ahead and start with that?
Sure. Um.
Our time item is the North End Water Project, and I see we have a few books speaking about that, um. You must be the style kid.
I've got kids now, so I, I'm an adult.
You're just a kid, but I seen you a lot. I used to.
I've heard about you.
Yeah. Who'd have let you?
A good story at the Denau Junction.
Oh, right. Yeah, we can't repeat that. And we have Larry from Business Oregon online with us. Morning, Larry.
Hey, Larry.
Good morning. And happy New Year.
Yeah, I need that myself, it's, uh. So, where do we wanna start?
I can kind of introduce it to you.
Okay.
Go from there. So as we know, uh, the town was working, town of Lakeview was working hard to try to figure out how to make, uh, the North End Water Project work, it just didn't work for them, uh, financially and, uh, timing wise for this next year. And, uh, so it's been, uh, some, in some discussions, myself and others, um, about what if the county took on the North End Water Project, had it built, and then gave it back to the town? And, uh, that is, uh, certainly a consideration that we now have on the table. I think we've got a lot of folks here that, uh, have been involved with it in the past session, uh, with town, and now we wanna, uh, have those discussions as a county. To see, is it viable? How would we do it? Uh, you know, is it something that we can proceed that we can do? Um. Some of the funding that would be involved, uh, is into consideration would be, uh, ARPA funds. Uh, we currently, for this last year, uh, the county got, I believe, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this next year, we will get another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's, that is an option for some of the funding. Uh, we may, we need to look at, uh, a couple of businesses to see if, if they might possibly be able to help contribute. We know that the cost of building, uh, this water and sewer project, uh, may have gone up since the last time that it went out for bid. And, uh, those are all things that factor into a decision of how we can look forward, so. Does that kind of introduce it? Okay, so. There's a section north of town that is not connected to, uh, town water, and then there's a section north of that that is connected to, uh, you know, Fort. you know, Fort Center's hot springs and whatnot. That's connected to another water system. So we have a gap in between there and it just happens to be an industrial area as well as some private homes. But uh Staub's, uh Pacific Pine are two of the main customers that are really advocating for uh trying to get hooked up to water and sewer through the town. There's a total of about thirteen uh businesses or residents that uh this could potentially uh affect twelve or thirteen. I can't remember how many is in that area. And then it also um allows for the town to expand or other business businesses to expand and they'll go onto the water system uh in the future, so. You know, this is uh something that I think that I wanted to bring as a discussion in front of the board so that we could have a discussion. We know that both uh Staub and Sons that are north of town and also uh Pacific Pine employ a fair amount of people in this community. I think last time I heard from Mr. Larson, he was employing around ninety-five people at Pacific Pine, which is very significant. And uh, you know, that that weighs pretty heavy on uh wanting to keep his business uh viable in Lake County. So that um we can keep them alive and moving forward, so. They need water and they need sewer and I don't know if it gets much more complicated than that, so. I know that at Shell Station, you see the fortis bodies out next to the, on the north side of the building, which is not ideal. And uh those are getting uh have to be treated on a regular basis and whatnot. And I I think that I won't speak for you, but I'm sure that you'd like to see a better water and sewer situation there at the Shell Station.
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
So should we have the town? Do you guys want to come up and talk about the project or do you guys just want to listen?
Let's kind of listen. Kind of where we're at with it. Mark is we're fine with moving forward with the project. Uh, we just financially can't do it. Uh, they don't pencil for us. If uh the county wants to step in and put that water system in, that's fine. It'll be treated just like the developers coming in and adding the water system. We don't have an issue with it. You know, we paid for a lot of the engineering on it already and we're more than happy to turn that over to Mr. Larson from the county to use it. So, okay.
You guys have it.
You know, we're we're willing to give you guys as much information and help as we possibly can. But with this new water treatment plant that's coming on line with us, we don't have the manpower or the finances at this point to move forward with this project. I think it's a good project. Uh, it will help out the town, the county, Larson and Staub's. Um, we don't have public.
So just so we don't step on your guys' toes, that's the thing that, and we wanted to be able to provide a service not only for these guys soon, but throughout the years. And so let's just talk real quickly about, once the project is in and up and running. What what do you see foresee as problems of the town taking it over as far as maintenance in later years or any of that?
I don't see any, honestly. You know, we're our, it's still on our books to try to get this project done, but I just don't see us getting to it before twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Because of the water treatment plant, that's it. That's going to be probably a two-year project for us. And that's our main focus because we need to deal with the issues that we have within six months. And we've got some pretty bad water means that have to replace. And that's the only reason why we have to move forward with this project.
Um, not only is there ARPA funding and potential uh business uh contribution, but we also invited Larry Holesgang on this conversation. And you know, just to see if there's anything out there with Business Oregon uh that has any possibilities is all for future funding. We know the infrastructure plan, things like that. There's, there's a lot of moving pieces there, whatnot. Just wanted to invite Larry to the conversation so that we're uh covering all of our bases too, so. Do you think that, Larry?
Well, just that uh my department is in the business of uh financing infrastructure improvements. And so the agreements that we originally set up with the Town of Lakeview for the project. Um, since the project stalled, we've kind of shut those down and closed them out. But that doesn't mean that we can't reopen it um as quickly as possible. Uh, and we can enter into agreements with the county instead if that's more appropriate. There are some uh awkward hitches in that because, you know, we are going to want to enter an agreement with whoever's going to own the system until the agreement runs its course. And if you pick out a fifteen-year note, then we would, and and it's the county that we've that we've done the financing through. Then we want the county to continue to own the infrastructure for the length of that uh note. So that's an awkward scenario based on what we're talking about today, since we're talking about um transferring ownership over probably back to the Town of Lakeview upon completion. Um, but you know, there are things I, we're still willing to be there and we definitely have financing dollars. Most of it is loan as the town was a well aware, a little bit of grant to go with it. Um, but the offer that we have on the table, you know, we can resurrect that without um uh much effort or due.
Larry, can I apply for a community development block grant for that project? Is that eligible?
No, it would not be eligible for block grant.
Would there be other, I don't know, things foreseen coming down for infrastructure grants?
I don't know of any at present. Um, I'm, I am trying, our department is trying to pay attention to what the uh federal infrastructure bill is going to bring us. And so we're keeping an eye on that. But as of today, I don't see that being a change in what we would be able to offer on this project.
So I'd like to have Jared and Greg come up and talk about it. But but there, if you guys want to come up for the public, just be able to see you and just talk about what the project means to your businesses and go from there, so.
We got two chairs.
Sit right here.
Yeah.
Go one at a time or? Greg, you can take it off.
Sure, uh Greg Larson, uh Pacific Pine Products. Uh, been here thirty years as owner of this company. Um, have worked hard over that time to to build the company to what it is today, which is approximately ninety-five employees. We're a wet door manufacturing company and so our products um go over the West Coast and and some even East Coast. Um, so we moved into the old Eastlake lumber, the Ringing Plant, North of Town. And that facility was without uh a water system, a sewer system, no sprinkler system. As we had grown over time, we reached a square footage that exceeded the allowable by law under one roof without a sprinkler system. So that certainly presented a need and was inhibiting our future growth um to add on to our facilities. In addition to that, uh as we've grown over time, in increased our employee base, um added more value to the company. There became a larger asset there, certainly worth protecting. And so it's twofold. Um, we want to protect the asset that we've worked hard to put in place. We want to protect today ninety-five jobs. Um, Larry, when they started two years ago, uh with the initial push for this project, we were probably at seventy-five. So I don't know if you can count those twenty jobs, Larry, over the last two years. Um, as something towards this project, but that's when this project started was two years ago. Um, so today, we have put uh close to eight hundred thousand dollars into a sprinkler system. It is installed. Um, that was all on uh a good faith, um understanding that this project would be completed. Uh, so we came in last year, did our part. That isn't in place today. It is not functional, obviously, because we do not have the water to feed that system. Um, on the septic side of things, uh that is just not going to cost to us. Lakeview sanitation pumps out every two weeks. And um that's how we function. So we certainly have options to put in our own water system to feed the sprinklers and we have looked at that. We could, we could drill a well that has some negative ramifications, that has some risk due to the large volume of water we need. Uh, we have looked at a tank. We could certainly put in the tank. Um, the downside of that is does not solve our sewer problem. Um, and I guess that there's a larger interest on our company beyond just our our selfish uh own interest. I I think this is a a great value-add project for the whole community for Lake County, for that North End, for future. So putting a a tank in kind of puts the kibosh on it, would take us out of that mix for the future development. And quite frankly, I'm not excited about a forty-two thousand gallon tank sitting on our parking lot. So it's an option, but it's not our, it's not our first choice. And so um we're in this for two years. Time is of the essence. We have uh again ninety-five people. Um, we are beyond our limits that the law allows under one roof. We have risk and exposure and that clock is ticking, so um very much on board with something that could be done in this calendar year.
So I'm kind of in the same boat as Greg, just uh from, a little different though because we're servicing travelers. We're the first thing people see when they're coming into Lakeview and um I could go on and on about the benefits we would have from this project personally, but I think from a community standpoint too, it makes Lakeview look a lot better when the first gas station they pull up to doesn't have a, you know, toilets backed up and they don't use a porta potty with their kids and it's a busy site. Um, and we're excited about investing into that side even more that there was better utilities. So I think it looks good on on Lakeview. Yeah, the first thing they see is a, you know, welcoming place of functioning restrooms. So it would it would help a bunch and I know Greg's put a ton of uh energy back into this community. I know that, you know, we we tried as well, so there's, there's that. Just in good faith that we try to try to do a lot of good for for Lake County and not stand on soapbox or anything. I know there's a lot of factors involved, but I just think it would it would be really, really sweet if something could take place sooner than what you're like Greg said, because we're kind of running out of time as well. We've fought the septic issues long enough, but we're gonna have to do something.
So so Jared, what are some of your plans to make it better out there besides getting restrooms? Are you guys thinking of the truck wash? Are you thinking of anything to?
Well, we kind of, we did a like a phase one remodel of that site a few years ago and would have went bigger if there was, if there was better utilities for sure. It's just costly to to keep up the pitch. We're having to have it pumped out more and more as the site increases in volume. Um, I don't know, we could always rem- I think the idea would be maybe in the future remodel even further into that, into that uh truck bay in the middle of the building, depending on tenants and that sort of thing.
So are you still getting your water from that re- yeah, Anderson Engineering or?
Are we sharing that well? Or I don't, I don't know if we're.
That's what you guys used to do.
Well, yeah, we we operate the well. We pay the power bill. Um, the plumbing out there is a bowl of spaghetti. Um, so I think at times we're we're producing stops. I don't know. I've tried to track it down over the years. So we we physically don't own the well. It's actually on, it's actually on Staub's property, but we maintain it. So it's, it's, it's not very, it's not very good. We have problems with it, sand, other things. But we were a part of it too, my office, um, so we employ seventy people, you know, we're not particularly afraid of this. Greg and Staub, but we were a part of it also. Uh, there was also one other, one other homeowner. I think there was, there was two homeowners, so there's two.
Okay, so there was two other homeowners along the, along the route. We got Pardus.
No, Pardus was not in.
Pardus was not in.
Pardus not on it?
Nope.
They didn't want to be.
I I think, I think it'd be worth talking to to them again though. I I think their concern was their rock bed was going to have to end and that's not the case. The parcels are just next to the highway, so I I think it would be worth another talk with Pardus.
So it wasn't after annex or rock bed?
No. In fact, I think that's even outside the urban growth boundary. I think the urban growth boundary dips down right there just along the highway.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like the.
I bet they do, but their shop is on a separate farm, so so I I think it'd be worth discussing that.
The the USDA Farm Services Building would be in on that and that's rock number six or seven employees, I believe. Um, who owns that? I don't.
I I had a couple of questions. One for Larry. Um, if the county had to own it for a certain period of time, could they just have an agreement with the town for maintenance and reading the meters and that sort of thing?
Uh, yes, of course. That would be, that would be perfectly acceptable and expected.
Um. And the ARPA funds can be used. That's, that's a, we're giving the use of that post on.
Yeah, we can use ARPA funds, but still, we're still going to be out. Six million above or so, and so. According to the engineering, the whole thing was nine million, right?
No, you're looking at the wrong one. It's like one point six, I think you're looking at.
Yeah, which one was I looking at?
You're looking at the water pond.
Well, I think uh.
I thought it went way up.
You all right, Larry?
That makes me feel way better.
Yeah, it's like I was looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, it's like one point six, one point eight.
Makes it makes it all less than all there.
I was looking at that one.
Oh, okay, that's it, yeah, all right.
I said, oh, you're about to get me a heart attack.
But I just haven't.
So so but the original uh bid was over a million dollars, about one point one, right?
One point two, I think is what the original was, Barry, and then uh went went out the bid, came in, I think at one point six, one point eight. I can't remember the numbers exactly.
Oh, went up that high?
One, one, one million forty-one thousand was one alternative, was one alternative one bid. The other bid was, we had two alternatives. Couldn't get pipe. We couldn't get PD some pipes, so we bid an alternate with ducted iron pipe, which is fine, except it's a lot more expensive than the water. And that came up to one point one seven one.
And does a fire pipe get a lot more problems later down the road?
So where's the one point eight million that Scott referred to that he thinks the bid did?
That's what I heard was that.
Oh.
I looked at the numbers.
Well, it's not right then?
Probably not.
Gotcha. So pipe, pipe has stabilized a little bit. We've got some better costs on pipe on some of the other projects we we've worked on, so. Um, I don't think it's quite as acute as it was. You know, there was, there was lots of alternates we we looked at. Right now, the project stopped. Um, right now the project stops at the, at the county road that goes down towards uh.
Per lake?
Um, we looked at connecting it in down on Duesenberry. Which would be ideal. We cut it back.
Well, doesn't that make more sense just in hooking the two?
Yeah, it does.
Systems together.
It does. It makes more sense. It makes it more viable, but it costs more too. So, or we could hook it in on by according to Mormon churches app. That's another alternative. But of course that's, that's uh, again, more business.
Have you guys looked into another water district in that gap recently? I know there's some history with that, but I just wondering if. It would make the project more viable if we examined a new water district in that area and then it would allow opportunity. For people to hook in or hook out or, you know, because I know the, the folks that live out there, they can have their well, but then they have the option of having the switch. And we switch it over.
Well, that was originally a water district out north of town.
Right.
And then it was, it was taken over by the town.
Well, I know, I, I know that, but I mean like the gap, like that we're now proposing to run the line, like, or have you guys examined looking? At a water district in that area in the name of north end?
No. Um, I would think the town wants everything under their water system.
So it just.
It would, it would take a year to get a district in place.
Right.
Um, that would be a.
Okay.
That would be a, for such a small area. I think that would be a, that would be a tool.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it would be. I was just curious to see like who's going to be.
So on the north end, where does, where's the south boundary of the town water? Does it end at the Forest Service or Hager Station?
Goes all the way to Geisinger. That's the.
But where's the south bound, where's the south user?
Mormon church is, is the last. Yeah.
So I mean, what, only a couple hundred yards from hooking together would make sense to me to want to. Even if it costs us extra money, the problem is, is that. There's a two hundred yard gap from the two water systems hooking together. That doesn't make any sense that we don't do that. Or am I way up there on this?
No, I, I, I think you're right. I mean, I, I think it's.
If we do this, I'm gonna do it right. It's just don't have to do it again, you know?
This came down to how to squeeze the project in with a little amount of resources.
Um. I think that if we could do it right, as Mr. Robertson's saying, it would be worth the extra. Amount of money to do it, because eventually we'd have to do it anyways, which means we have to start over as a brand new project. Which is costly to stop and then start again. Um. And uh, with uh, just vis- visiting recently with Representative Owen. The short session starts February first and he is looking for projects that are shelf ready. Which is what would be very much so shelf ready. Um. I, I think it would be in all of our benefits to submit to Representative Owens this project. To see if we might be able to get extra funding so that we can do a project correctly. Um, how that looks, I, I don't know. I don't know if, if you would want to ask for the total amount of the project. Or if you would want to ask for a part of it since there's our money to go in and share. Um, which may look more like there's more commitment of getting the project done. Um. But I'm, I'm happy and willing to work with you to, to put that together, to get it over to his office. Um, I think that if we can get it to him in the next couple of weeks, it would be very beneficial for everybody. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to come over and talk to whomever and put that together as far as getting content together. Um.
So Michelle, uh, just a quick question. Uh, what's not in place right now is the, what we just talked about, about connecting the north and south systems together.
Exactly.
So that verbiage would need to be.
Yes, there would need to be.
Engineering would still need to be done.
That's correct. And that can be noted on the plans to the, uh, to the, um, take it to the floor. Um, but I think that the more money we can get with the project that is designed and ready to go. The more opportunity we have of trying to find funding to do that gap. And, and that's, that's all I'm, I'm looking at. Uh, I would also. Um, love to see that if we do get money for that, that uh. Mister Larson and Staub's would be able to um improve their, their. Their total businesses. So, you know, that when people do come into Lakeview, that there is those nice. Um, larger companies, the largest in our, in our community, that they are really the hallmark of what people see when they come in. Um. So that, that's, that's, I think it's a real big push for a community project. And this is what it is. Everybody's here wanting to push it forward. So that can definitely be noted to the Representative Owens office. Um, and that we're all working together to take, to finish that. And hopefully we can break ground on that in the spring and have it done. Last I spoke with Mister Anderson, it was a. Like a nine week, ten week project. So it can be started and completed in a, in quick fashion.
And if you guys as a county need to go alone or whatever you need to do, Barry, we can work it out. On what we need to do to help you guys, to maintain or whatever we need to do to make that come to fruition.
I think the important thing from us is, as we build this, if we build this project, which I think we actually do have the dollar for. We need to have an agreement from the town for maintenance.
Oh, definitely. Everything needs to be put in contract.
All those things need to be taken care of.
Not, not just a handshake and.
Right.
It works out and it definitely needs to be split into a contract and, and agreement. To where the county knows where they stand, the county knows where they stand, right? So there's no arguing six months down the road or two years down the road, or if there's a major.
For fifteen years.
Well, and it was seen.
As Larry points out, if we have to hold this in ownership for fifteen years before we can eventually transfer it to the town.
Well, we always need to start projects with an exit strategy.
Oh, yeah. The county needs to be protected along with the town. And then both sides need to be protected. And with a written agreement on this, they, they verbal handshake, which is done a lot of times in defense, right?
And it also helps the business owners because they've been caught in the crossfire. They've, they've endured a lot while we've tried to figure out what we're doing. With this project. And I think it's been very uh, difficult emotionally and just from a business perspective. Then it's hard to strategize forward into um, you know, years, next year, five year plans for them as private business owners. So.
Thank you.
Do they have any other comments or concerns or?
One concern I have or a question I have, I guess, as much as anything is um. If the county were to take this on, you know, um, who would be the project manager? And uh, I know Anderson Engineering is, is used to doing that. But we want it done efficiently, uh, correctly, you know, everything else so that we're not wasting any. Any of dollars ourselves.
More time.
Yeah. Because I don't think we have anybody in house that could be a project manager on this. So, uh, that would be something.
We can do that.
Thinking to consider.
If we're gonna submit something, if we're gonna submit something to the legislature. And outline all the options and things.
Can you guys think about something that we can come up with the next week or two?
We'll, we'll help you out as much as we possibly can.
I, I do. I think it is in everybody's best interest to do that.
Because we're nine tenths of the way already there. In engineering, uh, if we, if we can add that extra piece of connecting the north and south ends together.
Well, it, it sounds like we already have, y'all already have the money. We have a project engineer. Uh, submitting it to Representative Owens' office is um. We're neither here nor there, but if they give us money, I'm super happy. But either way, the project moves forward. Um, the only advantage of Representative Owens' helpiness is to put more money into. The project so that we don't have that much of a burden.
And I think, I think the only thing that's really a deal stopper is if we uh, put this out, it, it comes back.
Crazy high.
Crazy high.
Yeah.
And, you know, then, then what?
Well, that's why I was saying one point eight. It gives us a buffer because the distribution channels are screwed up. The. I don't know what the pricing, the market is uh, at, just it's at a variable rate. It goes up and it downs down and. I would rather ask for one point eights and give back what we don't use than to ask for one point one and need one point eights.
Well, if we make that extension, you know, a couple hundred yard extension. I think we'd be better off just, you know, like two million dollars than, to them like you said, uh, you know.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, how you guys put that together is completely up to you. Because on our side, it will be treated like a developer coming in and putting water line into. A business. And then we'll come to an agreement on the maintenance and servicing of, of the line. So you guys want to handle that end of it.
In an earlier discussion, we had Michelle, you, you, the town's talking about getting the remote meters.
The smart meters, that's correct.
Yeah, that would all have to be done in smart meters out there.
And so. In our contract, what we have to do is these guys would pay the town, but the town would have to pay us for their water use. You see what I'm saying?
Say that one more time.
So it's gonna be smart meters at everything out there. So their water use will be sent directly computerized to the town. They'll have to pay the town for their water use. But until we switch over. And give it back to the town, the town will have to pay their water use to the county because it's still.
That, that can be segregated to where those meters are right by you guys. It's pretty simple with these new systems.
We just didn't want to get into the water business.
Well, yeah, and we could, we could work that out. I mean, that's something we could work out with the maintenance and everything else.
They, they're sitting in computer.
So we, we can work all that out. That's, that's a pretty minor thing.
That's accounting.
Yeah, I think the big thing now is to try to get water out there. And as far as a maintenance agreement or whatever we need to do, if you guys end up doing a loan. To show that you still own the project, whatever agreement we come to between the county and county, that's, that's a pretty minor, pretty minor issue.
Okay.
So, I guess we're in consensus that we want to move forward then on this project or not?
Are we talking about asking the legislature for more dollars?
So, that's another subject. I'm, I'm, I'm good with asking them for more dollars and I think we will.
Yeah.
My deal is, let's get the ball rolling. We can get more money from somewhere else. By that, but let's plan for this project and make it a full project. That hooks the two water systems together. So down the road, we're not doing this again. And because another business might move in somewhere along that path that doesn't have water.
More likely to when you do have water.
Yeah, right. We probably need a Plan A and Plan B, uh, just in case Plan A is too expensive. That we can still implement Plan B, you know, Plan B that will still get the, the basic necessities.
I agree.
But I would commit to open work with Michelle and, and Daryl and whoever to. Uh, try to get something to Representative Owens.
Okay, so you'll take that role. I can take that role and try to help make sure that keeps pushing forward.
If we're in consensus to move forward. Yeah, I, I think we're in consensus to move forward. My only concern would be to, and like Commissioner Albers pointed out. It's kind of a different subject, but asking the legislature for more money in this upcoming short session is uh. I don't know how to put it delicately. Um, and that's a, that's a, that's a big, that's my dream. In a lot of ways, I, I think in this next legislative session, it's a short session. It's not gonna last long and. Every representative and senator that has a bill that is probably, that will be discussed in this next session is already written. And it's already, they're, they're already primed and prepped and ready to go for this next session. And I can say that after the governor's meeting uh, yesterday. And talking to Tyler and where the legislature is headed. Um, and although we see a lot of dollars being pushed out. And a lot of these different dollars, and a lot of these different ways, um, every single dime is already your money. Uh, I mean, they're, they're, everybody's. I mean, it's just kind of a, it's a salivating, you know, like thirst for money right now in the legislature and every rep wants. Their share and their account of flesh, it seems like. And uh, so. If, if we're going to go to ask for more money, we want to have our plan put down really solid. And I think we should probably bet on not seeing that come to fruition until the long session in two thousand twenty-three. That's my, my bet. And because of the time constraints to this project and we want to move forward. We should do our very level best to try and see if we can make this work with what we have already. And like you pointed out, we have seven hundred fifty thousand that's been kind of moved forward. To us this year already and we're probably gonna get another batch this year. Um. We've got a lot of options in front of us and a lot of dollars that we very wisely to the board did not spend. Because we wanted to make sure that we had, that we were putting in the right place. And uh, so that's just. My thoughts on that as far as the funding goes. But I.
I totally agree with you.
It's full consensus on moving forward.
And so, my thought is if we move forward. We'll gather the money where we can gather the money, loan the rest. And. If we can pick up some money from the reps or senators along the way, we'll just add that to our loan. Speaking of the loan, Larry, what is the interest rate on that?
I think it was, I think it was two and three quarters.
I think that's probably it. I, I don't know exactly what the interest rates are today. I, I can look it up and, and send that to you. But I think two and three quarters is about the right ballpark.
It's mid to half a two.
Larry, is it too late to submit another um, infrastructure plan? I submitted one for Christmas Valley. Can I submit another one too? To business.
Sure, we can still submit another one.
Alright, so I guess the consensus is we move forward with um, project. Mister Gilbert will be liaison for that project on our end of it and go from there.
And we'll work with, and you'll work with Larry on trying to oh reopen a lot of those. Um, those documents, Larry, that uh, the town was originally working with you on and everything. Trying to get them to us so we can see what we have to do on our end. Um. You were mentioning, you know, like you guys had a lot of, you have been working a lot with the town prior. And now that'll be going through the county. So uh, if we could see those um, at earliest convenience, that'd be great to kind of get that ball rolling. See what we have to do.
You want me to send it directly to you or do you want me to work with Melanie?
Uh, work with, work with Barry. He'll be liaison on the project. And then um, or Melanie, yeah, Barry or Melanie.
Or both, okay.
Yeah, both.
Yeah, both. It is three months. So I'm aware Colin's buying on this project. Barry have a lot of junk. So they don't need it.
They said they benefit from it though.
They, they might be interested.
Yeah, they remember some of the counter talk.
I'll go by there today and see if I can visit with those guys. See if it's gonna all go by shears. Pardus and then uh.
So I.
They will get back home.
That is something, I looked up the urban growth boundary online while we were sitting here. I pulled up the maps. That is something, I looked up the urban growth boundary online while we were sitting here, I pulled up the maps, um there it is outside of the urban growth boundary, as Daryl stated, that urban growth boundary dips down. Uh, their shop and everything is within the urban growth boundary, but that's it.
Where does the cemetery get its water to your gate?
The town, town.
Yeah, Collins Collins has water in sewer service now.
But but there's something about that that I can't say specifically, but is it a volume issue with volume? Because there's something there that.
They're they're having a volume problem, I know that, or something.
So like when they flush a line, um, they lose volume and then their water system goes down and they've lost a couple of motors and things.
That's that on the cooling water?
Yeah.
That's that's gotta be there, their services.
There they lose their saws is what happens, because they they have coolers on their saw blades, and then they lose their saw.
I mean, there's there's a lot of water available there. I mean, there's a, that's where we're feeding grid off that line system, and there's a thousand gallons a minute available there. So what's their problem?
They don't know why.
I I have no idea, well, it sounds like it's internal.
I would say.
Yeah, it's something he probably wanted to talk directly to to Collins.
They've they've never complained to us that. Well, which is, you know. You know, at one time, the the perlite, um. Sorry, I forgot their name.
Gymboree.
With an I. They looked at it, uh it would be nice if they were a player also. I did talk to them several times, um. They would probably.
So when I talked to them.
They listened to you guys more than they have.
We can talk to them again, but uh, when I talked to them, you know, in the summertime, they're using up to thirty thousand gallons a day. And they didn't, number one, didn't feel like they could afford it uh from the town. But. You know, as was pointed out, they can still hook up to the system. Um, and at least have sewer uh part of it, and you know, not use the town water for their sprinkler system in the summertime, to hurl it from other ground, you know.
Yeah, that's.
They can still use their wells.
That's just dust control.
Yeah, dust payment, so. Um, but at this time, they they had concerns about uh, you know, taxes and things like that. Wasn't a deal breaker, but be an annexed state with the town. But uh, they they just felt like they used too much water, and it would cost them more money than what they're currently, they have a good well. That that does a job for them.
I'm just um, one parting comment on my part, um, we're into this two years, a lot of money. And I'm just encouraged to come here today, and um Scott and Shell specifically. Uh, we went to, I went, I felt like I was on the dark island for, you know, for quite some time, and I'm just encouraged um, come here today and hear your guys' support, so thank you for that very much.
You're welcome.
And um.
You're welcome.
Uh, the commissioners likewise, um, picked this up with the energy behind it. Um, just, you know, shows a lot of support for our our company, our our employees, our community. And I am just very appreciative, I really am, and then we'll do whatever, whatever we need to to do to help, I'm just, I just want to say a huge thank you.
We're right there with Greg too, thank you guys, thanks to everybody that made this happen.
Thank you guys for going to have.
And get a push through.
Well, let's make sure we're in the boat, boat doesn't take on water, we can start paddling. Sounds good, well, thank you.
So I've kind of lived through this before, when I was a young man, and working at Woodgrain and then went to Lakeview Lumber, then I went to Staub's, and Woodgrain wanted some help from the town and the county way before our time as leaders in the county. And they never provided it, and then Woodgrain moved out, and there was a hundred jobs that went. I don't want to see that happening again, that's that's the main reason that I want this to happen, you know. Both of your businesses, um, all of our industrial businesses down in. Um, I think it would really benefit our community, that's why I'd love to hook both of those projects together if we can. I did want to mention on on the side, um, Staub's came through for a system. And we're having trouble getting the uh jet fuel. And I wanted to thank your dad, hopefully, for that, so thank you.
That's all I have to say.
So, anything else, we done?
Yeah.
Thank you guys for all your help.
We still work on uh some of the gift representative ones, anyway, we know how things can change. I think we saw last year how money suddenly.
Well, I know for a fact there's a lot of infrastructure money coming in, um, a lot of it going to broadband, but there's a lot of clean water and and that sort of thing coming in, and so.
Yeah.
I think the future's bright for us there, so.
It's not gonna hurt to get in there.
No, we'll do what we can.
Can't get it, don't ask.
Yeah.
Well, thank you guys, thank you Jared, nice seeing you again.
Yeah.
So your dad, thank you for us.
And you you were the upstanding one in that story too.
We'll be talking.
It's not nothing, no dirt on you in the story, I heard, you were the one that actually did the right thing.
See, Daryl.
Oh, in the denial, I tried to.
See you guys, thank you, appreciate it.
See you, yeah, that was quite a deal, I thought there was gonna be a fallout riot at Denial Junction.
Is that the one with Rick Hopkins?
Yeah.
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 My dad told that story at Rick's funeral, he didn't, he couldn't tell the whole thing, but yeah, he told it to us today, but.
That was a great story to tell, that was.
Hey Larry, thank you, you're one of the best.
I was enjoying that, I sold that story at the Everett's funeral.
Totally. You know, it's different, I could be a part of this, wouldn't you?
Okay, I'll be in touch.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, that was quite a deal.
Sounds like it. Yeah.
It's all gone now, I wish it was still a place, I'd love to.
Well, that was.
Where I can use, you know, not very used to be, and will be probably.
Well, it's some of the most fun I've ever had out there, even though I'm afraid about that being murdered.
Yes, he did, yeah. Alright, well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much, yeah. Right, careful, tell your dad, thank you for bailing us out this summer, and I'll let him know, we really appreciate it, so.
Yep. See you guys.
See you. See you. Alright. Thank you for that. Should have opened at nine ten, my apologies, open the budget hearing for the supplemental budget, Fund Two Oh Four. Now I'm gonna take a five minute break.
Sure, yeah.
You got time for a five minute break, Mr. Gert?
Absolutely.
We'll turn for.
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll reopen the meeting at ten twenty five, and we move on to um the custodial position. Um, so as you guys know, uh, we've had some trouble with keeping custodians, we've had eight.
Seven.
Seven.
Three years.
Yeah, yeah. And for one, in my personal opinion, I don't think we're paying them enough. Two, it's not a full-time position, um, and with the problems that we're having throughout the country as far as work workers, um, virtually every business is wanting to hire somebody, and I think we need to be a little more um competitive than we have been in the past. And so that's why I'm bringing this forward. So my idea is to hire a full-time custodial person, and that person will be under Dave. Um, it will. There'll be assigned duties, they'll have airport time, they'll have fairgrounds time, and they'll have courthouse. Um, there's other options, we can hire a actual business to do it. Possibly.
We have some history in the past with that.
Can I interject on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, the library um used to con hire a contractor out of Clement Falls. And um, the unfortunate thing about that is that the contractor, the people that work for them live here, and they were just as, um, I won't say irresponsible, but the work was um, poor quality and the pay was poor and the time, they were all part-time, so it are, we don't, we have one local contractor that I'm aware of, that that's what they do for a business. And um, I think they're pretty full on their schedule, in fact, they um currently are cleaning the road department. But other than that, I don't think we can have anybody else local, and they are just a um a team, husband and wife team that's um out, and the other, the the people out of Clement Falls, like I said, they contracted with them to provide the service, and I want to say it was about six hundred dollars a month, so it was pretty reasonable, but Amy thought the work was poor, um, the staff they had was not, she she terminated the contract pretty quickly and said they could do it themselves a lot better.
Fisher Williams, will you talk with Kevin out there and see if they'd be interested in also having a custodian? If we do hire a full-time one to go out there also.
Sure, I can.
And then, um. But I mean, we're just the last few that we've had in here haven't done the job that we would like to see.
Or they just don't go there though.
Well, and and the thing is, is that, you know. If our bathrooms aren't clean, and our courthouse isn't clean, it reflects on all of us as a county, and I'd like to be more professional.
Yeah, it's just not, it hasn't been working out, the direction that we've been going, so, um. If we, if, I'm fine with going to a full-time position if it means that we can get some other work out of it. Um, you know, and I think we we want to put it under Dave, so you, you know, the person has some airport times, fairgrounds time, that makes sense. Um, and to be able to utilize for other things, but again, you know, we're not really talking pay, you know, full-time. What is that, what is full-time, or wh- what is the actual rate of that, and what is that salary?
So do you grab those numbers or not?
Um, no, but I can, um, right now, that's gonna be a position that would be um added to the contract. If there's not a, even at this, the pay that we've been paying, which I think is about fourteen, just under fifteen dollars, like fourteen eighty or something like that an hour. Um, we'll have to create a scale, it would become a union position, um, there's, we don't, that's a a project that would take a little bit of work. And consider, I don't want to be um someone to think this is offensive, but um, it's really difficult to find a male that's going to clean the bathrooms in the manner that the females around here work. And I don't mean to say that bad, but it's just a matter of, it's just the way it is.
I think it's true.
And um, to what extent you want this other person to do other work? Is it just the the cleaning of these other facilities, or, so they're not gonna get shifted into maintenance work?
No.
It's me, pure custodial work.
Like like the fairgrounds, so, talking with the fair board previously. They were willing to split fifty fifty at the time, but they were afraid in the wintertime, they wouldn't have enough work. In the summertime, they're gonna have fifty percent work.
Well, that would be, my other question would be on that, um, she currently contracts, she being the fairgrounds, contracts to have um someone clean the restrooms during fair. So would that be that person's job now, um, or would there still be a balance in the contract?
I would say they'd be part, they would still be part of the, but they'd still have to contract, because it's way too much for.
Cause that always, um, the the person would have to understand that they may not have fair time off, they may be working during fair. So, that's a consideration. Yes. But yeah, so, I mean, I really think the the idea to go full-time, in my opinion, is a good one, um, but there is a lot to work out on the details of what that means.
That's just what I'm thinking about right now, is, you know, and I don't want to go too far down into the the weeds and stuff and get lost in it, because you could, there are a lot of details to work out still with that, you know, when you say full-time position. It's a, it's a union position is what we're looking to take on and funding that, and uh, there's a lot, there's a lot there, so, um. But I I completely concur that it's a need, and we need to figure something out, because.
It's just that, it's just not working.
Right.
And so that's why I bring this, you guys, brainstorm with me.
Right.
If if you don't want a full-time position, what, starting there are options, and that's what I think, and so. Um, and I I agree with you, um, I would think there's a male liar that can um, or get it to them.
Yeah, as a male, I am being very sensitive though, I was like.
I was trying to be really nice and careful, and and I am by no means a clean freak either, but there's a few people that are, and we just aren't gonna snot their nature, and.
The job needs to be done regardless of.
Well, when when Sharon was here, she did an absolutely awesome job, I think, when her daughter came on to help her and and that. And so, but, and we haven't found that person yet, and with the job situations, the way they are, um.
So my question is, we're gonna go from part-time, fourteen eighty, three and a half hours a week, right? For three and a half hours a day.
Yes, nineteen fifty, nineteen nineteen and a half hours.
Nineteen and a half hours a week to what I'm here proposing is a full-time forty, or thirty seven and a half hour week.
But it just won't be.
With benefits, uh, union position. Do we want to try something in between, or do we want to go all the way?
So what what is then?
What if we raise it three bucks an hour? Or something?
Yeah, you'd have to be on the dollar end of it, cause once you go over twenty hours, it's benefit. Even if you're only working twenty-one hours, you're getting benefits, and it's a union position, anything.
Yeah, so I'm just asking, we offer money, instead of attracting a different crowd.
Well, I know that the way we're doing it now, we're not getting the people that we desire, and so the thing is, is that the airport and fairgrounds need somebody to clean. And they don't have those positions, right now, the fairgrounds is relying on the maintenance guys to do the cleaning, and they're, they have more than enough maintenance work to do to get pulled off those jobs, it's not working. And so, that's why we need somebody in those places too, and so that's why I threw that out there, because I'm game for whatever.
That that would mean that person would be uh, uh, taking care of the showers and the the RV situation and that kind of stuff.
So do we know what the full-time benefits type position would cost us?
I'm gonna just go on a wild guess here, in about sixty thousand probably. Seven, six, seventy thousand on the, for the loan end of it. Seven, six, seventy thousand on the, for the low end of it.
With benefits.
Yeah. I mean, I could get you that number before you're done probably, if we move from here to the next thing. Yeah, I'll give it, have it for you for tomorrow, how's that?
That'd be great.
And that is starting at, say, the um. Fifteen dollars on the bottom?
I, I, I think you need to check what other custodians and other counties are making, I think fifteen dollars is probably way low. If you might ask, but.
Jake, you have a question. Comment.
Just comment, with community justice can be occupying the house out there. Whoever the custodian is working out there during the winter months or summer months will also have, because part of our requirement for someone to live there. Will be ten hours a week community service work, so we have three people that are spending hours community service work being done. So that there's, there's that summer help out there as well. But then also, around here, around the courthouse, we have clients that can't always make work through because of their work schedules, so depending on the work schedule for this position. We'd have some community service workers come in and help out.
Right.
In any time. Understanding the siegeist Clarence piece, they won't be able to go in certain offices, but they can stick to the hallway, sleeping mopping. Um, washing windows, scraping snow outside at night when it's snowing, just trying to get a jump on it so it's not piled up in the morning. And there's a, there's a lot that can go into it. And my last comment is, I've been pushing. I've been pushing for this to be a full-time position for a long time. Um, reason being is, um. The courthouse comments have come in, courthouse is kinda looking run down inside. So we try and pile on community service workers to do, to try and help spruce it up and it's no fault to anybody, it's just. We've had eleven, twelve different people since Sharon left, so it's a big training piece and they. They, they get focused on different things and some things get, gets missed, um, bathrooms are the biggest piece that really gross people out, um.
But then again, you know, like the, the thing that we've always run into with bathrooms is. Someone will, when they do do a good job, one person goes in there. And it just destroys it.
I, I, and I understand that, but uh, we have a, but it's no fault, but, but that, oh, this isn't any fault to anybody, it's just. We gotta have the right person for the, in the right, right position, um.
Right.
Kind of the nature of the beast with any position, um, but I think retention is huge and.
Yep.
Full-time is one way to retain people, um.
You're still gonna have incidents where the bathrooms gonna be, I mean, they could do everything that morning and then go out to the airport and. Five minutes later, somebody comes in and does something.
Yeah, you're still gonna have incidents.
We're gonna have those incidents happen.
We have a full-time person that at least we can call in and be like, hey, can you come in and take care of this, because I know you just come different. Going over to Commissioner Schulenberger's comments, so, you know, about maybe paying this person more, keeping it at that part-time position. There are some advantages to that, I don't wanna just completely gloss over that, uh, of having a position that's okay, part-time, that provides someone more. Of flexibility in their life and the things that they've got going on, but they've got a really good paying job at a, at a part-time.
Then you have to double your wage to get the right person.
So what is the wage again, Mike?
It's like fourteen eighty or something like that, fourteen eighty-six, it's just under fifteen dollars.
Yeah, see, so that's, that, like you even pointed out though, for the full-time position, fifteen is very low these days. But you know, I mean, I mean, for me personally, if I found a part-time job. That was paying me, you know, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour or something like that, I mean, I would hold on to that thing and I would. Do my level best and make it work, so there's, there's some advantages that I just, I don't, I don't wanna just let it slip by and.
I think I have to see what the um, the hard time rates are for the fueling stations and the, um. The uh, you know, quick stop and the places where those people would work. Whatever they're getting.
The competing type.
The competing wages on those, those places.
The thing is, is that you see constant turnover there too.
Yeah.
I think you're.
So Mel, what, what are you gonna?
Yeah, I see your whole head, um, so when I first started working here, it was two people cleaning at night.
And that was a big team of mom and daughter.
And they were great and they were accountable, um, if you guys decide to change it up. I, I like the idea of having a full-time person, because I'd like them to clean the bathroom twice a day or at least do a check. And you know them all, is there's a lot of people that are out using the restrooms and it would be great to have them cleaned multiple times, regardless of how they look. But. I think one thing it needs to be is more centralized during the day hours, because. It's been a challenge to find someone that's accountable with their time, um, I think it's really easy at night, I'm not casting any stones, but. To maybe fudge hours here or there, I'd like to have a position where we can see them, build relationships with them. Um, maybe hiring two people again, you know, just to have. At a better rate, I don't know, but it's a lot at three and a half hours a day to get it done. Um, it's a big building, so. I don't know if when you hire two people, increase the salary or pay, um, but we need to change something for sure.
Cause it's, it's also disrupting, um, when someone's vacuuming and we're trying to conduct business in the middle of the day. Um, we've had that happen, we've been coming at three-thirty and we've got client, clients in our office and they fire up the vacuum cleaner. Um, so they could, I mean, ob- obviously early mornings, get some of that stuff done, but then also the wax into the floors in the night, so maybe.
Yeah.
A flexible schedule.
That's what I was thinking, like vacuuming, waxing the floors, those things, taking the trash out, those are things that should be done, you know, when the offices aren't occupied. Uh, but the job has to be done, and clearly, and then beyond that, during the work, during the third day, you know. We would like to see them and I think if they had good supervision, you know, whether they're here or they're at the airport or they're at the fairgrounds. Um, I think Dave could do that, I thi- I think he could supervise that person, um, I think Jeremy, um, Greg could help. And help keep that person accountable, so, you know, either they, I think there's advantages.
So Dave and I discussed having them start at ten and they would start at one of the like fairgrounds or court knees or whatever. Do those jobs for however many hours, take their lunch and then come here and then start doing that stuff. And then making sure they're doing like the noisy disruptive step after work hours.
It'd be like ten to seven.
Something like that.
We are gonna have to find the right person for that kind of schedule.
Right.
So you have to pay them for it. That's a terrible schedule. So, which I, I mean, I appreciate the reason for it, but, you know, there, there's not a lot of people that want that schedule either.
That'd be a full-time job, that would be the full-time position.
But you're just gonna miss out, if you have kids, you're not gonna do any of their stuff with them. Um, so you, you know, you're limiting who's gonna be available for that kind of schedule. And I can appreciate why you need it.
They can make it come in early too, you know, before, you know.
Nicky, when you give us the numbers for uh, for a full-time position would cost for the world, could you also give us the numbers of what we're currently. Paying per year for the current position? Just so we have something to compare with. Think that would help me a little bit. I'm taking, I'm new, so I'm taking it all in, I'm hearing that we need a full-time position, I just wanna make sure we can afford it and make sure that the work is there.
I totally agree, and the thing is, is that the way I, I have planned in my mind on how we'll finance it is, is that. Fifty percent of it would be paid by the courthouse like we normally do, right? Who pays the?
Central services does and it's approximately fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year right now, I think, so it would be. Ten or fifteen thousand dollars or more from central services or healthcare, but.
But then the airport and the. The, or care of fairgrounds would pay, but it's, yeah, they would, fairgrounds is gonna pay, in my mind, at least twenty-five percent. You know, because, uh.
Their budget can handle that?
Yeah, but the, I haven't got, I got the fair board giving the money and so. This is why I'm just, I'm just trying to get through this, just, cause they need a custodian, the airport needs a custodian.
Talk about the male female, right?
Yeah, I was out there with our crazers and this.
I never really did the one thing much.
I agree.
Especially you, Chair. And you know what, Commissioner, if we get down a road where it isn't gonna pencil out. Let's look at keeping it full-time and open the hourly range of.
You know, the, the library has moved to doing it themselves and maybe they would consider. A contribution for a quick run-through at the library, I don't know what their, but we're not, we're kinda moving away from also. Does, do you want someone to just do a better job, be a better hire versus there's not really more work?
Well, there's more work because of.
Cause we don't wanna load too many, we don't wanna load too many extras and then the courthouse gets neglected anyway because they're doing too many other things.
Yeah.
So really, it's a financial burden on the, on the courthouse, on central services, more than some of the other places.
And I, I'm game with raising the hard time to chip try it and, you know. But I think we need to talk about, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'd say you're. The people that I know that do some side work, like house cleaning and stuff, you, you're lucky if you can find someone to do it for twenty-five dollars an hour and that's just. Cleaning someone's house, that's not this. Right, I mean, that's. The going rate's probably thirty dollars an hour.
So let's look at the numbers and, uh.
Yeah.
We can continue this conversation, but.
Yeah.
We will move forward with something.
Yeah.
Some sort of change. Either an increase or a, a full-time position. I'm, I'm good with either way. Hey, just to point out, you know, as someone who used to be on the road as, you know, with a truck and have, you know, a hundred. Hundreds of customers and I, you know, twenty a day sometimes, a lot of the reason why, you know, you would charge twenty-five dollars an hour for. You know, those type of jobs is because you're rushing around from place to place. What we're offering is at one single location, we have the equipment here, it's not their equipment that they're using, it's our equipment, we have our floor buffer and our. Our supplies that we provide, um, so it's, you know, a lot of times that twenty-five, thirty-dollar an hour figure that you would be dealing with with a contractor. Usually they're figuring in the fact that they're using their own products and their own equipment, that's where they carry their own fuel correct and going from place to place, but there is no going from place to place. It, it's just here at the courthouse and the fairgrounds, both locations have their own stuff and they could even use technically a counter rate, maybe even do it, I don't know. But, uh, so just, there's options, I think, you know, available, I think I definitely wanna look at the full-time position because. We're seeing the huge need, um, just real quickly though, go over to, you know, if this person's gonna be at the airport and the fairgrounds. What are the dollar contributions again from the, from the fairgrounds and airport?
Well, the airport's not gonna be much, cause it's gonna be like once a week out there, but like the fairgrounds will probably be here out there certain amount of time on a daily basis.
Is there a contribution from the fair?
That's what I'm gonna work it out, at the first.
At the fair board meeting, okay, alright, that's just, I mean, anything would help, I'm not asking for, you know, a set, you know, I don't wanna get into the whole payment we've had. Discussing, you know, part pays, you know, whereas like percentages and everything else and time, uh, but, uh. I think it'd be great to know what our options are with that.
Okay, let's, let's move on, Mr. There, you wanna tell that? Talking up. You didn't have anything?
No, a, uh, that was a, Nicky's here for the quarterly service pens. Oh yeah, we, we skipped the quarterly service pens.
He says that he'll just come pick them up.
Yeah, but we need to go through them.
Service pens.
So, did you really care for that?
Mm-hmm, and was here for both.
Huh?
I was here for both, cause I knew someone wasn't gonna be here for the other one. I just wanna make sure that, um, we acknowledge the fact that Melanie got her service pen for five years last quarter. She got it last quarter and she didn't acknowledge it and I'm here to acknowledge her service in her five years. And make sure that, um, everyone out there knows that Melanie's super and she's been here five years as of last quarter. I don't care about the other people. How's that promote Melanie?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I didn't think about her not saying anything when she got it.
Well, we love you, we're glad you're here. For another five years at least, or five minutes.
Finish up the meeting in a way, right?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, you're welcome, congratulations on, and, and the other folks too, I think, what, is there three other people?
Yes, yeah, we have, um, five years for Rachel Bonine and Kimberly Buck and we had a ten-year pen for Heather Eversole. And we were hoping the sheriff was gonna be able to join us with those. And Richard Kobe in fifteen years.
Good job.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm going now.
Okay, alright, see you later.
Martin, gentlemen, if you may, it's not any.
It's Chair.
Just, uh, okay, Mark.
This is a chair too.
Uh, I had to say that, for the eggs benefit, so before you is, um, already Criminal Justice Commission, like having a new justice, um, justice reinvestment. Contract, IGA, I should say, um. This, um, these funds are for two years for the biennium, hundred forty-two thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars. It helps support and funds our lifetime enhanced supervision and treatment court during the period beginning July first of twenty-one and ending, um. They always extend it six months on the end, so this one ends December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three. So we have to go to the end because the funds haven't been allocated yet because of the processes of the, um, Criminal Justice Commission. So we are now requesting our reimbursements for the first quarter and second quarter. Um, so they extend that out, so we can spend our money through the, uh, thirty-first of December of twenty-twenty-three. We. Use this for our treatment court, um, and the second page, if you look at the second page. Uh, our award number, our allocated award, hundred forty-two thousand four hundred ninety-five. And project start again as outlined by Criminal Justice Commission, July first of twenty-one and then December thirty-first of twenty-three. There's a whole bunch of important responsibilities to come with this and we've been in compliance since we received our funds in twenty thirteen. Um, we have compliance for our, um, quarterly reports and semi-annual reports. Part of this money, justice reinvestment, it's up to fifteen percent now, funds our nonprofit victim services program. So between the, uh, crisis center here in Lakeview and New Beginnings, um, intervention, up in Christmas out. They receive seven and a half percent each, so a total of fifteen percent. Um, and then there's three percent taken out of that that goes for research involvement, just to make sure that we, we don't. Do our own research, Criminal Justice Commission does, make sure what we're doing is fits the standards.
So it's almost like an administrative fee from the Criminal Justice.
Yeah, yes and no, but they do come back and give us our numbers and our successes and we're lacking and we're not. So it's been, it's been beneficial.
Thank you for always applying for that, by the way.
It's needed, I mean, it's sure, it sure helps out my department, so, and our treatment court, so. It's needed, and it sure, sure helps out my department, so, and our treatment court, so. So, my recommendation is, I just ask that the Board accept the contract. Um, and I will be attending you tomorrow on Christmas holiday to talk more about justice and other parts to also.
There's nothing new on this contract. Alright, thanks Ben.
You betcha. Thank you.
OHA agreement. Sixteen ninety-five, eighteen dash three. Discussing on that. Looks like uh.
Thanks, Scott, I have my hand on it.
Okay.
It's showing public health emergency preparedness and response, an increase of eight hundred some odd dollars, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. COVID response, um, an increase of six thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty cents. So in total, it's an increase of sixty, sixty-eight hundred dollars and seventy-four cents, or seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. It's for the period, uh, or period between July one and the third year. Any discussion on this topic? Uh, I, I, I do ask something. So, a couple of years ago, when we first got these, started getting these, I was seeing a lot of these OHA agreements coming through, and as liaison of public health and mental health, one of my biggest concerns was when these dollars come down to local counties, they also come with a lot of strings attached, but they also come with an extra amount of work for our people. And uh, that's something that, and when we see something of these small numbers, like eight hundred and nineteen dollars for public health emergency preparedness and response, what is that? What, what, what is eight hundred dollars really going to do? And what are the additional requirements being put on our people? What I, in my opinion, what I've seen is that the state has a pot of money, and based on your population, they will divvy that up, and they will give portions equally, equitably, if you will, to, to the populations that they, you know, to the individual counties. Because Lake County's population is so low, we only have about eight thousand people, and depending on equitable uh, stance within the county, there's a lot of factors in that definition, we typically get these like little chunks of things that are around eight hundred some odd dollars, five hundred bucks increase, whatever it might be. What is the, what is the addition? No work coming with that, because all the counties are receiving the same amount of work to administer a program, to administer a project, whatever.
They're receiving the same amount of money.
But they're not receiving the same amount of money, and eight hundred dollars doesn't cover peanuts to administer a whole new program. So.
And we have an OVM person already, right?
So, so in, in my opinion, uh, when, when, we've never really refused one of these contracts, because we always thought, looked at it as all these good dollars coming in, we can use the dollars. Honestly, I'm actually a little curious to see what would happen if we didn't approve this. And, and I'd like to see, uh, maybe the state explain to us, you know, why suddenly they decided to give us eight hundred additional dollars in the middle of our fiscal year? And where those dollars are coming from? Um, and are, are you going to put additional work on our people? Because I just know that our staff at Public Health are extremely overworked at times, they have so many things that they're working on, Judy is just swamped. And uh, you know, we think that we're doing them a favor by saying, okay, we're gonna give them extra dollars to get these projects done, but maybe we're not doing them a favor, maybe we're actually causing more of a headache for them to administer a whole new program that comes with this whole weather amended contract.
I still didn't agree with you.
I don't know, I'm, I'm just, it's a food for thought, we're in a work session, have a discussion.
I would have to hear from the Department Heads coming to us personally, or you know, in the meeting, tell us, hey, please stop. Cause it's too much work. I haven't quite heard that yet, and I know that uh, Public Health has applied for grants that were complicated. Maybe what they were getting into, I think, um, but, you know, until we hear from them saying that it's not doable, I think we need to keep it.
Well, I mean, as, as liaison in public health, one of the things that I have, I have found difficult is to get anyone to say no. People have a harder time saying no, especially when their job is to administer public health services to people. And because everyone wants to do a good job, they all wanna do this, and they wanna do that. There just reaches a point when you have to admit, you know, that we live in a county with very limited options and serviceability and everything else you have to call in question. Um, it's, and especially to call someone into a public meeting and say, you know, hey, we want you to say no to providing the public health services when this is your job, technically speaking.
You know what, maybe we should do this, go ahead.
So, just building on what Fair, you had to say, Judy asked me to present this to you guys. Um, she is in favor of this, it's not new, new services, it's just extra COVID funding. Um, just to add that in.
But again, like extra COVID funding, for what are they, how is it the money that they received? There were three hundred thousand dollars received under some of those line items.
I don't know, I don't wanna argue with you about it.
Right, right, no, 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 I'm not arguing, I'm, I, I, I really am not, I'm, I'm just.
We're just trying to not put more work on her, on public health.
Because, see, to me, previously award balance under the COVID-nineteen response was zero, we weren't getting anything for that. But now there's six thousand dollars additional, um, but it's not, it's not additional, it's new. And so, but the eight hundred dollars is in addition to the thirty-seven thousand.
Hello? Hey, you doing okay?
Our Chair left. You're, you're the Chair. Sorry, I, I, this is just discussion, we don't have to make a decision today. I'll probably follow up with Judy as well, and like, Melanie makes a good point, she's saying, you know, please submit this to the Board and ask them to approve this, I'm.
Yeah, don't worry here.
I work. That's why.
Maybe there, I hear your point, I hear, definitely hear your point.
To me, the six thousand dollar extra is, that doesn't look like an addition to a project, that's already there because that's at a zero. So, um, so that to me looks like a new program. Uh, it's a new line item. Um, it's not new that we're dealing with COVID, because COVID active monitoring is a line item up here, and that's three hundred and three thousand. So, but that's obviously its own deal. And then if you snap down, public health emergency preparedness, there's thirty-seven thousand that came into that, and this is an additional eight hundred on that, okay, maybe that's the same program. But again, COVID response, that's a whole new line item to me. So, but uh, just, just for discussion. Just thoughts.
So, I think, when Judy has the time, maybe her, her group can come over and kind of give us an update, we can just flat-out ask them on some of these things, are we creating more work? Just kind of give us an update on what's going on.
Well, and I can, like I said, I can talk to Judy today, I'll probably mosey on over there and have a chat with her about this, and just try and get it straight in my head.
Okay.
Um, so that we can at least, you know, if, if it is appropriate to act on this tomorrow from my point of view, um, I can at least have something to bring back to the Board.
Are we ready to move on? The Department updates on her BHT grant update.
Mm-hmm, I applied for the second round of funding for that, so.
So what, can you tell us what that one is?
Yeah, so, are, we, just this year, we've been eligible to apply for this grant. Historically, fifty-three ten recipients were only eligible to apply for HRTG funding for veterans. And um, about, I would say on average, three to four months out of the federal fiscal cycle, um, we run out of funding, and then so we backfill with other public funding for SDF and fifty-three ten, and so we stretch these further, so I'm really.
So these are transportation programs?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm really excited that we were awarded ten thousand dollars in addition to our HRTG, the formal award hasn't come through. So I got that in the first round, and then they asked if I wanted to apply in the second round for this, second part of this funding. So, I'm hoping that we'll get that too, and I just wanna let you guys know that I applied for it, and we'll see. But, I had some good feedback, and so I think we'll be successful. And then this also allows for deviation, because uh, an HRTG grant doesn't allow for, allow for deviation. On the trip, it's only dest, for the destination for the VA facility, so this'll have opportunity for the veterans to see other non-VA services, um, so if they wanna go to the pharmacy, they can do that. Because a lot of these trips, they're going to Portland, New York, White City or something, and they're long, so they might as well just be able to go where they need to go, I think. And then I'm working with a new VSO, a lot of these trips are over and back, and she's going to look into how we can support these veterans who can't afford to stay the night, and maybe they can go to Portland and not have to go up and back in the same day, because depending on their medical plan, and that could be a twelve-hour day, just, just for that, so. Hopefully, you know, in the future, they'll all be able to, like, for these services, not make them such a hurdle, so.
Awesome, thank you for doing that.
So I just wanted to let you guys know that Lake County applied for another round.
Can you give us an update on what's going on with our water doors? Christmas family water?
Yeah.
Grants?
So this week, um, they're doing a training for the volunteers, um.
To go door to door?
To start going door to door, I haven't got a numbers update from two weeks, I think we've got four more in this last week, so I don't know, like, the percentage of those, but so they'll start training this week, and they hopefully should go out next week for a door, while the training's fresh, that's kind of what we agreed upon. Um, with Amy leaving, that's maybe a challenge, I'm not quite sure yet, um, she's put Debbie in as her villain in this process, so. Um. It's, that's, that's not the same. I think the Christmas family water surveys, they, they don't have to be both come in, we can start one without the other. Um, I think we will have a good return on that.
So, we have to have eighty-five percent, so.
Eighty-five percent of our response.
And you don't know where we're at yet.
Probably around fifty.
And that's what we're going, working for now. And that's all paid through our contract with Portland State University that we're working for, so. Any other updates?
Any other updates? Just bringing to you guys' attention, Senator Merkley's gonna have a virtual town hall on the twelfth. I got a.
What time is that?
Um, for the public, it's at four-thirty. I will, time before that with the Senator, at four.
That's the twelfth of this month?
Yeah. So. That on your radar? Um, if we're going to give comment on uh, RNA with the BLM, and, you know, they're just, they just have a scoping out there right now, to, you guys all got the letter, I think. Um, that is gonna be due on the eighteenth. And I think that it would be prudent of us to comment on that, um, still gathering information and whatnot, and I see that there's gonna be a uh, BLM virtual meeting. I'm sure it's the same thing, but it's very similar on the eleventh. Uh, there'll be a, something that can be involved in, and they'll gather some more talking points.
So did you want to send individual letters, or you want to send them as a county as a?
I think we should send them as a, as a commissioners, if that's, if you guys are good with that.
Yeah.
What we've kind of done in the past, but. If we are in a great, agreement with uh, some of those talking points, I think we can come up with a letter, get signed by us. I think we can even just do something with consensus and get it sent on this next week sometime, or have something that we're working with.
It's due for next work session.
Right, at the latest, so.
Right, so, we can get something put together, and just pass it around and try and get it sent off.
Just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention. These, this uh, Catalans Association, the nature species deal that I'm with, that's gonna be a uh, in, in a month meeting, that'll be virtual, and gonna try to set them monthly. Right now, it's pretty low-key, but, you know, there may be things that come up. And maybe canceled one or not, but we'll at least have a set time every ten months, so. That's kind of what I have going on. Uh, this week, we, there's gonna be a group of us who are gonna um, talk about child care issues um, here in Lakeview. Some of the major businesses and uh, commissioners in the hospital, et cetera, and school, bringing them together to have a little work for lunch, and talk about child care, and what we can do in Lakeview. Interesting topic.
Yeah, actually, one, real quick, go back, going back to the liaison list, uh, just wanted to give you guys, full update, I was approved to be on the LCRI Board, um, just recently. Um, last week, it was, um, so that should probably show up on my liaison list, cause I'm officially on that Board now.
First of all, I'm sure.
I think so, yeah. But um, I think because LCRI as a third-party entity is going, is, you know, kind of been having so many discussions around a lot of these topics, it's important for us to be more engaged with them, that we can kind of also have, you know, a say in where they go as a Board, what role they play in the county going forward. And I think it's, there's, there's going to be a growing need for a third-party entity uh, on a lot of these different land use discussions that we have gotten now. And for monitoring purposes and making sure things are done appropriately, you know, we, we work really closely with LCRI as a Board in advocating for um, not taking farmland out of production um, for the use of soil. And uh, I think it's important that we have, you know, we're, we have a stake in the game already. I think it's important that we have a seat to take here. Um, so.
Thank you for doing that. Chris Williams, a good question, have you heard any updates on the Water Master position?
No, I had, I was hoping that you're back from the, you know, by the first, this first week of the year. Uh, I imagine over the holidays, things have been kind of closed up. Uh, I imagine over the holidays, things have been kind of closed up and they're still trying to catch up after Monday. Heck, I was and just trying to get into the office on Monday.
I think they blew the job internally.
Correct.
Before the holidays. I just didn't hear there was somebody internal or they went external.
My understanding was that there was no one, no one internally that was interested in the position. So they were, uh, and that's no surprise, really. Uh, this is a very remote area to have someone transition to come all the way out here and they have so many vacancies right now. There's probably a lot of other jobs open among all those that people are trying to grab up. And quite honestly, when you're as a department, I would imagine as an agency. If you have forty, fifty unfilled positions that are vacant. Getting someone from another part of your agency to fill one of those positions isn't necessarily the preferred outcome. Because now you have to fill that too. You have to fill anything, really. You just, yeah. So they're really looking to open it up. They want to open it up to outside entities as soon as they could. Um, to start bringing in candidates and get applications coming in. Um, my understanding is that that is open now and outside entities can put in.
So, uh, I had a phone call with the regional Kyle. Kyle Gorman. And after our Christmas Valley meeting before the end of the year, which was very educational. I thought beneficial to me anyway. Uh, you know, we found out that we have two water masters in Lake County. One for Christmas Valley.
We didn't, we didn't even know on the top of choice.
And then, yeah, and basically the, the break is a.
Interrupt.
A pass, uh, south is the other water, you know, the, which we thought was the whole county. Um, I got a message from Dan Jansen who said, you know, community of Christmas Valley would really like to see some water masters for Lake County.
Granted.
And uh, Kyle told me that that was not on the table at this time and that the position being flown is only for the picture on pass south. I think it's something that we need to take a look at um, here in the future. And number one, is there a capacity issue? But number two, is there a way we can work that to where we have one water master would be able to for Lake County? Right, I think that would uh, make most people in the county happy.
Well, we're already divided half the time, the ones off, and this does not hold up.
They drew a line right through the middle of our county and that was, that happened right after you and I came on board. It was a map and it, I don't even really remember how it showed up on my desk. It might have actually been Brian. I don't wanna get into trouble. Somebody, somebody gave you that.
He had a full plate.
So, right.
But. Brian, whatever.
Right, he did have a full plate, but this is what's ironic about the whole deal is even after that change took place and I called him and I was like, I don't think this should happen. I don't wanna see this division and this, this line all being run out of the shoots up on the north end. And he said, well, it's kind of already happened or it's happening. And I was like, well, I, you guys didn't do this with any, any information from us. You didn't talk to the governing body. You're just, you're, you're just throwing things around. You'd never spoke to the leading on, which was, I believe, Dan Shown at the time. Uh, he had no knowledge of it. Um, so, and they just kind of figured they could willingly do that. In a way they can, but this is what's funny is that even after they made that change, they still had Brian going all the way up to the north end to do all the work. In fact, I even went with him on one of his tours to go up to Thompson Reservoir. And to, to learn how they were doing, um, how they were doing levels and what they were doing in the lake.
And weren't we supposed to be on the uh, selecting committee?
Yes, if one of us get the application, one of us should be on the selection committee and it's up to you guys, whoever you'd like to.
Well, I guess what, the angle I'm going is, you know, if we get that position paid, placed, we need to talk to. Watermaster program and say, hey, let's, let's set up a plan here to where we get back to one water master for Lake County.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I know, I'm, I've got these water master helping out, but.
Right.
To, to do what they did was kind of.
Yeah.
Sneaky.
Yeah, they, they didn't, they didn't consult with us and I think that's a good.
I didn't know about it until we went to that pay growers.
Oh, really? I'm pretty sure I told you guys.
You didn't told me.
I, I'm not.
It was serious to me there.
I brought it into a meeting several years ago and I was like, I'm not happy about this. I think it needs to stay within the county. Um, but it happened, but like I said, also. They were still using Brian for everything on the north end because they could get the guy into shoots county and come down to Lake County. He didn't wanna leave shoots, so, and that's again, why I think it needs to be one water master.
Do you think it'd be possible to give them a call, so, and just kind of see what things are at? We can give an update tomorrow during the Christmas Valley.
That'd be great.
That'd be good if we were.
Water master.
Yeah. But, yeah, I should, I can give probably a call and talk to them and figure out where exactly we're at. Because again, like, you know, I, I haven't really heard anything since that meeting since either.
When you called me, I was busy trying to get unstuck.
I didn't have, well, I'll talk to talk to him, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So. Uh, I'm just gonna close the hearing for uh.
Sure, even though I.
I'm gonna close the budget hearing for supplemental budget two oh four at eleven forty two.
No comments given.
Did you, did you guys have anything else?
I, I have really quickly, just a little bit of a liaison update on, uh, not, not so much liaison, but on AOC. So we had our governance and revenue disco, uh, chairs meeting yesterday. Um, it was just myself, um, David Yamamoto and Sushila Diapol and Tyler. So we discussed where we're going to be going in the future. There's going to be some very interesting subjects coming up in governance and revenue. In my opinion, governance and revenue is the most critical committee at AOC to be involved in. Because it's a catchall. Everything goes through there at some point or another, it seems like. And so it's, I, I sit on that committee as vice chair. Um, and David and Sushila are co-chairs. There's several, the discussions are going to be centered largely around tax. And it's harvest tax, timber tax, uh, sequestration tax. Um, and uh, property tax values and tax reform. Uh, which is, is always, is, is kind of a trigger word for me whenever I hear the word tax reform. Um, in the state of Oregon, taxes are very intertwined, especially when it comes to timber tax. I think that some of the metro counties would like to tackle some issues that they legitimately have within those counties. As it pertains to how things are valued and taxed. The problem is, is that they want to go in and reform some of those things. It opens up a huge can of worms with timber. And the metro counties don't understand those issues. And so it's interesting because the other chairs, of course, on this committee is David Yamamoto. Who is, who's very heavily engaged on timber issues and myself.
In county.
Right. Um, so, and then myself from Eastern.
Is there any way that AOC doesn't join the state of Oregon, paying the crop brooch? And that we can handle these individually or?
So many of these taxing issues really are state concerns. They're not county. We don't dictate what tax laws should be necessarily, but we need to be at the table for when these discussions come up. And the, one of the questions that, that it's coming up again, I, I just know it with legislative committee and governance and others. Is whether or not um, AOC should be neutral on certain issues. And for myself personally, I have a very strong issue of being neutral on anything that affects my county. Regardless of, you know, and sometimes they feel, well, this shouldn't be really something that AOC should take a position on.
I think one of the problems with AOC is when they do the neutral thing. Because to me, it's like, let's, let's take on these tough issues and deal with them.
Instead of talk about it.
Instead of, oh, we're gonna be playing neutral because it's tough, tough work and.
I, yeah, I agree. I, I just also know that it gets our staff into a tough position. When they go in to advocate for us and advocate for counties. And they have to come in with a position from the vote, from their committee that says, hell no. We're not gonna have any discussion on this whatsoever, so that we get excluded from the conversation then. And so the, it's, I, I wanna kind of relay some of this to you guys. These are some conversations that are probably gonna be coming up in AOC meetings coming up. Be ready for them. Um, I think it's great to give the staff the support they need, to be able to find ways of getting into these rooms and. And say, hey, you know, we wanna discuss this. We wanna have, we wanna talk. But uh, not necessarily taking a full position right off the bat. You know, on whether or not we support or don't support the bill. It's like, well, if you wanna come talk to us about the bill first, that'd be great. But, you know, we'll, we'll hold off on taking a position until then. Uh, and that at least gives our staff a place to go. But I'm personally, and I'm, I'm gonna be taking some heat for this from some of the counties, I am not willing to take a neutral position. Because to me, that's the position. And it's a position that I don't care and I do care. And, I mean, so anyway, just sharing that.
So speaking of AOC, I'm going to uh, Oregon Brewers Convention in February. And then after that convention, I'm meeting with Gina Nickel. The AOC with some of their staff, just to talk about some ideas that I think can help with rural counties. Because a lot of times, you know, we're so divided between the rural and the urban counties. Where I don't think we need to be. And the reason is that I don't, I don't believe they understand how we operate and we don't understand how they operate. And what our needs are, are completely different than theirs in some areas. And the decisions that they make as an urban county, how they, they don't realize how they can affect us. And, and so I'm just going there after the convention, just to. So if you guys have anything you want me to ask or what you think might help or what do you think?
When is that convention?
February sixth through the ninth and I'm meeting with Gina on the tenth. So I'm trying to kill two birds with one stone.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be going up there in February, maybe at our next work session later this month. If you have some time to kind of roll over and unpack some of your thoughts on what you're going to present, sharing with us, maybe at the next work session. And maybe we can kind of work on kind of some good messaging we can send as a united corps. It might be good.
One thing that comes to mind is uh, you know, like the one we have with Christmas Valley Water Project. How do we get off the schneid there and get that project paid for? When we're competing against uh, communities like Grants Pass, you know, that, that do have other options for income. You know, sometimes it just isn't a level playing field.
Right.
And Christmas Valley only has so many uh, hookups to their water system. And so you can only borrow so much money.
Right.
That's it. And at some point, we really need to address this, that, you know, can we get a one time? Or sometime, get, get an option for each in Oregon for these communities that have these needs. Yeah, I realize it can't be our turn every time, but it seems like right now it's never our turn. Yeah.
And see, that's where the, that's why I want to have this discussion is because. You know, at our AOC meeting, I had somebody else voted in to vice chair. And because I need somebody. And that thinks on the rural art or help, or help with the rural part. Because if we have a metropolitan president, I know I'm hanging out there.
No, you're good.
It's, it's, we're gonna be forgotten again and.
And it's really never our turn.
Right, and it's never our turn. That's feet draw. And that, it's, you know, it's, it's hard on us, you know, to get our voices heard at all. And so if we quit climbing that bell, we're never gonna get to be here. And on just these projects like you're stating, you know, there's. So, uh, we need somebody on the rural side. Making enough noise that AOC says, you know, we're gonna help you guys too. You know, I realize that, you know, we're small potatoes as far as our contributions to AOC. But we need votes and I don't believe we're getting that rural connection. And that's just not on Eastern Oregon. You know, there's virtually rural communities in every county that aren't being spoken for.
Right.
And we talked to the commissioners in Marion County or Hope County or Joe Screen Jackson. They have the same problems, um, of getting heard on the rural side, yeah, and so.
All right, it'll be a good conversation to have, yeah.
Yeah. It'd be a conversation to me.
Well, I guess that's all then.
Yep.
So, the journey meeting at eleven thirty four.